Lundonary Town Council, March 21st, uh, March 21st meeting to order. Please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance.
Do you want to lead us?
Sure.
I pledge allegiance.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic where it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Let's please stand for memorial for a moment of silence for our men and women serving us both here and abroad. Thank you. All right, thanks for coming, folks. We have a pretty light agenda tonight. We can go right to public comment. Is there any, anybody out here that has any, any comment? Marty?
Martin Sugus, Seventeen Wimbledon Drive. In here, talking about the, since we're going to the SB two style balloting, any chance that you guys would consider moving it from March to either April or May to vote instead? Because otherwise, the deliberative session is going to end up somewhere in the beginning of February, I think, in the middle of the winter, and I thought maybe to move it out to the better weather would be better if you guys would consider that, okay? That's all I had. Thank you.
Okay, thank you, Marty. Okay.
Go ahead. I have a question. I have a question for Dave. Is, to do that, would that require a charter amendment, and does that?
That would require a charter amendment, not a revision, so it's something where the council can vote to place on the ballot for next year's town meeting.
Oh, thank you.
Yeah, right now, we're, you have in your package a draft budget calendar for next year, not to rush things along, but according to the law, you need to have your deliberative session between February 4th and February 11th, and the school has February 10th, Friday, already reserved, so you need to give some thought to that soon around later, so we can tie down the hall for that deliberative session.
Okay, thanks, Dave. Okay, um, see, we have nothing under public hearing tonight. Unless any of the councils have anything for public comment, they kind of skip over that. There is no old business right now. New business? Can I get someone to read?
Sure. Ordinance 2011 dash oh two relative to an amendment to the zoning ordinance to reflect updated traffic impact fee methodology and corridor study and to establish new rates. That's A. Would you like me to read the rest?
Uh, yeah, you get to read the whole thing.
Okay.
Thank you.
No, no, it's on page six.
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah.
Attaches an ord-
Six.
Sorry. Right here.
No, six, okay. Keep going down.
One more. There you go. Okay.
And what you want to do, Joe, is just start up on the top right corner?
Whereas.
Whereas introduced, the date, public hearing date.
Okay. Whereas the planning board has periodically reviewed and amended traffic impact fee rates to reflect current development patterns and revised development forecasts, and whereas the planning board has completed a corridor and impact fee methodology study on the Route 28 Western segment, which simplifies the administrations and calculations of the impact fees, updates constructions, costs for improvements, and thus forth, the impact fees based on the private development share of said improvements, and whereas the planning board has recommended that the town council act favorably upon the request. Now therefore be it ordained by the town council of the town of Lundonary that the town zoning ordinance be amended to reference the updated Route 28 Western segment traffic impact fee methodology corridor study in section one, dot two, dot six, dot one, adopt said study and establish new impact fee rates, implement rates in accordance with alternative two as stipulated in the methodology report.
Okay, you need to make a motion. So moved? Did you say so moved?
So moved.
Need a second?
Second. Okay. Uh, this is a first read on this ordinance. The public hearing date scheduled for this would be April 4th, 2011. Thanks, Joe. Uh, let's see. Get to the next one. Resolution 2011 dash oh three. Tom, do you want that one?
Hey, Sean.
You should have voted on the first one.
I'm sorry. I'm sorry. To bring it forward to it, thank you. Any, any discussion amongst the council on that?
I have a question. Is it, is it new fees altogether, or is it an increase of existing fees?
Increase of existing fees.
By what?
New methodology.
By what percentage approximately?
I've not calculated this much, but I can get that information to you. We'll, we'll have staff here on the 4th explaining where they're going with the recommendation as the planning board.
Okay, thank you. Anybody else? Okay, seeing none. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, nay. Motion carries five zero. All right.
All right, I got the next one.
All right, thank you.
Resolution 2011 oh three relative to agreement with the New Hampshire Flying Tigers for the use of the Auburn Road property. First reading tonight, first reading is three fourteen eleven. I guess this was, is this the rescheduled meeting of three twenty one?
That's correct.
Rescheduled meeting of three twenty one, adopted tonight, three twenty one. Whereas the town has participated in the remediation of the former Auburn Road landfill, and whereas the town is interested in beginning the process of utilizing the property, and whereas the New Hampshire Flying Tigers has expressed an interest in using the property for its modeling, model flying club, and whereas the proposed agreement would allow use of the property by the Flying Tigers, and with, with the town retaining control and flexibility regarding the reuse of the property, now therefore be it resolved that the Lundonary Town Council, that the town manager is hereby authorized to execute an agreement between the New Hampshire Flying Tigers and the town of Lundonary for the use of Auburn Road property. So moved.
Second. Okay, we got a motion and a second. Can we have some discussion?
Any questions?
Sure, go ahead.
No question?
No questions. I'm sorry. Joe? So you guys familiar with this? They've been using it for a while, I think, haven't they?
Less, less three and a half years.
Yeah.
That's correct.
And they did presentations in front of the planning board and all kinds of stuff a few years ago.
So it's a pretty good thing?
I guess they think so.
Tom, do you have any? No? Okay. All right, uh, looking for adoption tonight. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, no. Chair votes affirmative. Motion carries five zero. So we have resolution 2011 dash oh four. Can I get someone to read it?
Sure.
Thanks.
This is the first reading of resolution 2011 dash four. Discontinuance of highway portion of Scoville Pond Road. Whereas the town council in accordance with RSA two thirty one, section forty three, has received a petition to discontinue and relinquish all public interest in a portion of a class six highway known as Scoville Pond Road between Woods Avenue and Brewster Road, and whereas the matter of discontinuing a highway under RSA two thirty one, section forty three, is within the authority of the town council, and whereas the aforementioned highway was discontinued subject to gates and bars by voters at the nineteen thirty two town meeting. Now therefore be it resolved by the Lundonary Town Council that the discontinuance of a portion of Scoville Pond Road Drive, as shown on the map entitled, approximate location class six road to be abandoned. Tax map sixteen lots thirty eight fifty two, fifty three, sixty dash three, eighty one ninety eight, ninety nine, one hundred, prepared by Jones and Beach Engineering, Inc., Stratham, New Hampshire, dated March second, two thousand and eleven, is hereby approved, subject to the condition that the trustees of the Kennedy Lord and Trust shall indemnify and hold harmless the town of Lundonary from any claims arising from the town council's decision to discontinue said portion of Scoville Pond Road.
Motion.
I- Just say so moved. So moved.
Thanks. Second? All right, we have a motion and a second. This is the first reading. Any discussion from the council? Yeah, education. Why do we want to do this? I mean, it's just-
We were requested to discontinue it by a person who hopes to develop the property, so state law requires when you have a petition to have a public hearing and to act on it. When you discontinue a road, one of the potentials is that folks who are butting that road may come back and claim damages for no longer having access to that road. That's why we have the provision in there, which puts that liability onto the property owner. However, this is an old woods road, it's not been used forever, as you can see, was discontinued in nineteen thirty two, so it's just clearing up the title.
Okay. It's still responsible for fires or whatever happens there, right?
Well, it, discontinue the gates and bars is that we don't, we haven't maintained it since nineteen thirty two, so.
Yeah, and we're the only ones that can discontinue a road, or rename a road, or stuff like that.
Okay. Thank you. Any other? Okay. All right, so the public hearing for this will be April 4th, two thousand and eleven. We got one more? Do we have to? Oh, yeah, we have to, sorry. We have to move it to the public hearing. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, none. Chair votes affirmative, five zero, to move it to public hearing. All right, we have one more resolution.
So Sean, after whoever reads this, I have, I'd like to propose an amendment after it's read.
Okay, sounds good. All right. Okay, thanks.
Resolution two thousand and eleven dash zero five, resolution relative the allocation of cable franchise fees. Today's the first reading, March twenty first, two thousand and eleven. Whereas the town has entered an agreement with Comcast to provide cable television services in Lundonary, and whereas part of the agreement requires the collection of a franchise fee, of which a portion is surplus to the needs of the cable division, and whereas the town council formulated its FY twelve general operating budget, which included revenues from the cable franchise fee to offset the community's property tax burden, now therefore be it resolved by the Lundonary Town Council that of the five percent cable franchise fee, one point five percent shall be deposited into the general fund, and three point five deposited into the cable special revenue fund effective July first, two thousand and eleven. So moved.
Need a second?
Second.
Second. Okay, we have a motion and a second. John?
I'd like to propose an amendment to this, taking into consideration what went on at town meeting, in which we went into the, the, several funds to be able to fund the fire department, the volunteers, the, the additional part for the uniforms, in addition to that, in looking at what we think we may possibly be have coming down the pipe here from the governor, we're not exactly sure what. We know that we're not going to be able to reduce expenses dramatically, so you always look to increase revenues. So I'd like to propose is, and this is kind of a two-piece proposal, and I'd like to add something behind it is, is that we move to two and a half percent and two and a half percent. If we did that this year and we continue to do it in out years, we'd still need about three years before we'd run out of money in the cable division. It would gain us about seventy thousand dollars in revenue, with the flexibility of being able to move that back into the cable division if we so desired to, but we'd have it in the general fund to offset some possible future costs. That would give us about a hundred and seventy thousand dollars that we know that we would have in case what may come down from the state. In addition to that, I'll propose probably later, but would like to get a feeling from the council now, with regards to the open space money that has been given to them over the years for change of use, and that I would, under our new form of government, is my understanding that by a simple vote of the council, we can send that to the ballot. And with the future development, that looks like it's coming, and some major change of use coming, we may be looking at quite a large portion of revenue that we could bring back into the control of the council from the standpoint of being able to protect ourselves going forward. So I'd like you to take those things into consideration and open that for discussion if you would.
Sure, absolutely. All right, so with John's amendment, it's definitely something we should be talking about, so we'll start with Joe.
Well, I think that trying to take any money away from the cable fees yet, I'm still trying to figure out, get my arms around, you know, why you would continue to dip into this, into this money, so I'm just trying to, I understand what he's trying to say, he's just going to break it up a little differently, and put the two and a half in the general fund, and two and a half in the cable special revenue fund, but that's taking it away from the cable special revenue fund, so what effect would that have? I mean, it's just less money going into it, right? Would it affect any?
My understanding from the numbers that I went over with, with Dave on it is, is we have about a three-year window where we're a hundred percent funded.
Right.
I'm looking to protect this this year.
Right.
We can change it again next year. We can change it every year. From what I understand from Dave, we could take all five percent if we wanted, and then just fund the cable department out of the general fund, out of our own operating budget, and control all those dollars. You know, it's, you know, what I've learned is, is that we're not going to find any more tax revenue, you know, short term.
Right.
So we need to get as much revenue as we can to be able to provide what I consider the five services that everybody's looking for. You know, protect our kids in the schools, you know, police, fire, trash, and plow the roads. So that's kind of the thinking behind it. We certainly don't have to do it, but it gives us an opportunity to have options.
So by moving another one percent, we have more control of that one percent, basically?
Yeah, I think, what'd you say the number was, about seventy thousand?
Yeah, about, about seventy thousand dollars for your one percent on the franchise fee.
So in a simple term, that's a policeman.
That's important.
So that's kind of, you know, where, where the thinking is around it. And I'm not looking to defund them, I'm looking to say, you know, let's get ready for what might be coming at us.
I'd just like to hear from the public and see if there's any comment about how that would affect them afterwards.
Yeah, we can do that. Let's keep it with the council for now.
Yep.
Well, just a little more background of what John was saying. We, in the last budget season, we actually went there to save a position for the cable studio. So, you know, I think a precedent was kind of set that day by the cable studio, because they were okay with it, so, you know, the door was open, so we stepped in. But saying that, it was for a good reason, so. Okay, back to you guys.
Now, by the way, when you're going through, if you don't mind, also give me your opinion about change of use money going forward, and I'm, and you know, and you don't, if you don't have an opinion on it now, at least consider it as a council goal going forward.
Sure.
I'm sorry, I didn't hear, Dave, how much did you say the one percent change is?
Yeah.
You said about a policeman?
Tom, we, we take in about three hundred and fifty thousand dollars roughly from the franchise fees, which is about seventy thousand dollars for your one percent. If you recall, during the budget process, there was concurrence to have a hundred and four thousand going, essentially diverted from the cable franchise fee to support general government, and there was also discussion that we never closed the loop as far as the resolutions go, so the one point five percent as originally proposed is about a hundred and five thousand dollars to-
And back at town meeting, we approved Article nine, which was a special revenue account, and that, we can do this without voiding that vote?
Well, that, that's correct, yeah, that's the expenditure side, so.
Okay.
For all intents and purposes, we knew there'd be a deficit coming out of the sewer revenue fund, because our budget is about three sixty six, we take in about three fifty, so for this year, it'll be taken in about two hundred and forty five thousand, so it'd be a, it'd be a draw on the special revenue fund to fund this year's operations.
And if I can ask a question about the L U C T tax? If we do, as John's suggesting, and propose a change for the voters next March, between today and next March, everything, any L U C T tax goes directly to conservation, correct?
That's correct.
Correct.
That's correct.
Do we have any idea about when impact fees out of Woodmont might be coming online?
At this point, we do not know.
Okay. We're still probably a couple of years away on that end of it.
I don't know the answer to that. I mean, you know, it's, they're inconceptual, you know, so I don't know the answer.
PUD hasn't been finalized yet either, right?
PUD's finalized.
PUD is an ordinance that hasn't been finalized.
No, I mean, I'm saying their PUD.
They have not presented anything in a formal atmosphere. They've had conceptual conversations.
Right.
Yet they have presented ideas, but they've not presented anything of a formal manner yet.
The PUD master plan, right, for that.
Is the vote to change that, is that just a simple majority?
Simple.
Okay. Okay. Tom?
No, I don't have any comment at this point.
All right, I guess I'll speak for me. I think that, you know, what John's saying is a very valid point. As we go through the beginning stages of this year's budget cycle, which starts today, you know, I think that we kind of, as we go through our goals, we need to be aware that the economy is still pretty tough out there, and, you know, depending on where the council comes in as far as where we're, what we're shooting for as far as a budget, whether we're flat, whether it's a one percent or a two percent, I think that we need to look at all revenue streams that we have that are out there, realizing the effects that they have on the departments that they come from. So as far as the L U C, I, I would definitely be supportive of that at this point. That's going to be quite a large sum of money, and I think to consider doing that would be probably a good option, because it's, that, to me, should be coming back to the taxpayers in that form. I've kind of supported that in, in the past, wanting to at least look at it and discuss it. So I'd definitely be willing to discuss it and, you know, take a look at it, so. All right, so any other council comments before bringing it up to the public?
I, I just have a question. Dave, when, I was on the Budget Committee, and we used to do the taxpayer white paper. I think it was the Finance Department that said cable fees aren't a tax, and whatever we did with, you know, whatever came in shouldn't have affected the tax rate.
What, under the previous policy, that's correct, because the previous policy was everything went into the cable fund, so whatever came in was not a revenue to the general fund, so it didn't impact, didn't affect, impact the property taxes.
Okay. I, I guess what I'm asking is, people who are paying this thing, they can't complain about, you know?
There's, there's no statutory requirement to dedicate cable franchise fees to the cable fund.
Oh, okay.
It's totally within the jurisdiction of the governing body.
And there's nothing in our agreement that says we can't do that with the cable company? Okay.
That's the thing we hear most out of the public. You know, these are, this is a cable fee, it's, it's, it's supposed to be a use for cable, you know, and again-
That's a philosophical position, not a legal position, right? We do receive funds for equipment, which we have to use for cable equipment, that's in our agreement, but as far as the franchise fees, they're free to be used by the, by the towns, the towns that expect.
And if we get lucky and the governor says, you know, I'm not going to take as much, put it back?
Correct.
Okay, thank you.
Okay. All right, Dottie, I take it you want to put in some commentary?
Yeah, I do, I have a couple of questions.
Sure.
Dave clarified one thing about the twenty eight thousand being for equipment only, and that sort of didn't, wasn't reflected in resolution, so I wanted to make sure that that was clear. However, I'm not clear, are you including that twenty eight thousand in the three hundred and fifty?
No.
You're not?
No.
Okay, so those numbers have gone up. Okay. Okay, so that stands as it is, then, that's good. One of the other thi, and I, and before I go any further, I want you to know how much I appreciate what you did during the budget process in keeping the employee in place. It makes all the difference in the world, and it means that whatever funds we have, we can really utilize them well. I did have a question, though, and this is something that has sort of bewildered me for a while, and that is, in Article eight, the special revenue fund article, the last sentence says, "Any surplus in said funds shall not be deemed part of the general fund accumulated surplus, and shall be expended only after a vote by the legislative body to appropriate a specific amount from said funds for a specific purpose related to the purpose of the fund or source of revenue." And I get confused there, because it sounds to me like, yes, you could make some changes, you could say, okay, instead of all of that money going into here, we're going to tell you that we want you to buy some other equipment, or we want you to outfit another room, kind of like what we did when the town hall was being built, and what we did over in the school for them. But it, it reads to me, and I'm not asking you to tell me how you think it reads right now, but I'd, I'd like you to take another look at that and see what you think of that statement, but that has always read to me as though that money was not to be touched. We don't take money from the sewer fund, I know they need money right now, so we'd really need to take it from them. We don't take money from any other special revenue fund. So I'd just like that to be considered when you, when you're making your final decision on how to handle this. The other thing that I wanted to bring up is that past precedent kind of concerns me, because I believe this was the third or fourth, I think the third year in a row, that forty thousand was taken from the cable revenue fund and put into, transferred into the general fund. And I may have missed the word, but this year, it said annual transfer of forty thousand. And it wasn't an annual transfer by a decision of the board that I ever heard. It had become an annual transfer because two, three years in a row it had been done, and I think that's a little bit different than actually setting a policy on it and you deciding how that's going to work. So that was another concern that I had. The, it's, it's kind of like, you know, when you have children, and you do something once, and next week they say, but you always, so want to be careful we don't go there. The other thing that I'm concerned about is that the money that's in that fund, even though Dave is absolutely correct, there is no legal restriction, other than whatever you may have in the charter, or what's written in the warrant article, that type of thing. But as far as federal or state law, there is no legal restriction on you taking all of that money, and unfortunately, there are some places that do take all of that money. And yes, it is a philosophical question as to whether or not people should be able to know that when they're paying that fee on their cable bill, that it's going to be used as, as something positive for their community, that they kind of opt into versus another tax. I believe John Sylvester was the one who basically made the point some years ago, and Tom, you may remember, that John explained that it's a, it's a tax under tax. If I'm paying, use a round number, if I'm paying ten dollars a month in my franchise fee, which would be ridiculously high, but if I was, and that money doesn't go into the cable department, it ends up going into the general fund, it offsets taxes, and kind of means I'm helping out Market Basket, that my money is kind of going in there and helping out the other people in town, so they can have to pay less, but I still have to pay again when my tax bill comes in. Just a philosophical point. John did the argument way better than I just did. So I'm concerned that this not become a standard, that maybe what John said, there's something in particular going on this year, which makes it really important that we find a surplus of revenue, so we do that, and if that's the case, as I was when, you know, we talked about we'd have to lose a person if we didn't take that forty thousand out of the cable fund, I'm all for that. I have no problem with that. I would bend over backwards to help make that right. But what I am confused about, when I read new resolution that's being proposed, I honestly cannot tell whether this resolution stands for this one withdrawal on July first, two thousand and eleven. My understanding of resolutions, and, and please correct me if I'm wrong, is that they basically establish a policy as to how you're going to proceed in the future, how the board is going to behave, so every year you don't have to rewrite the rules. They're there for you, you made the decision, you move on until something causes you to change that for some reason, and this year might be the reason, I don't know, but in your consideration of passing this resolution, I would ask you to look at that, and my question would be, do we need to do a one-year resolution that actually negates the one that we had from two thousand, that put the full five percent into the cable fund? Is that something that actually needs to be done in this form, or can it be done very specifically and clearly, that this is the year- that this is the year that this is happening? It'll happen on July first, two thousand and eleven, because that's what was used as a number when you were generating your revenues through budget. And then you're back to the old resolution. It goes back into effect as soon as this one's over. And like I said, to me, with the dates in there, it makes it look like it's going to be done on July first and then not there anymore. So, I guess one of two things, either I need better understanding of what that means, or it needs to be clarified within the body of the resolution so that it's clear to anybody who reads it that it doesn't, you know, it does or does not mean a one-time deal. So, those are my questions.
Mr. Karen?
Well, just clarification, the resolution, as written, it would be a council policy. And I suspect the practice would be is, once we go through the FY thirteen budget process, and whatever decisions are made during that process, we'd either continue to operate off, under this direction, this resolution, or the council will look at a different resolution next year to reflect their budget plan for FY thirteen.
How do we make it not a policy? How do we make it for one year only? Never visit it again?
You can put effective July first, two thousand and one, and terminate it on June thirtieth, two thousand and twelve. That would make it a one-year resolution.
But in all honesty, Joe, you really don't need to do that, because this council could change in a year. And this thing could come up again as another resolution. So, it really, you really don't need to do that. It's not gonna...
Well, it sounds like it's gonna come up again. It sounds like it may be policy.
Like John said, it just may.
And I'm concerned that it's gonna come up every year as a policy, so I don't wanna, you know, I don't wanna keep dipping into this if we don't have to. So, like John said at the beginning, one of the things that his selling point was that, you know, right now it's really bad, so this is the reason why we're gonna do it. The economy's really bad. This is the reason why we're gonna do it. And I, for one, would rather not do it if we don't have to, continuing to spend money in an area that's, you know, out of cable taxes. It just doesn't sound right to me. So, that's why I want it for a year.
Couple of questions. Dottie, if we were, could be a little forward-thinking here and considering, what would your thoughts be if we were to just flip the switch and put the cable studio into the General Operating Fund, a hundred percent, and just make it another budgeted department? How do you feel about that and what you think the impact would be?
Well, obviously, one of the pros of having the Special Revenue Fund is that we, unlike any other department, are allowed to save up for future large purchases. We've been able to spend in years when we only had a surplus over, in our operating budget of maybe twenty, twenty-five thousand. We've been able to do a project that was in excess of eighty thousand, because we had saved up for that. That's one part, okay? The other part that concerns me, and if it is being funded out of the General Fund based on the revenues being deposited there, is that at some point in time, there could be no cable fee source, okay? We don't know where things are going. I mean, I just heard today that those huge cell towers that we're fighting over all the time, because we don't want them in our backyard, are gonna be about this big from now on. So, who knows what's gonna happen with cable as we go down the line? But one of those things might be that the cable company no longer needs to use our rights of way, and therefore, we would no longer be obligated or have the power to take these funds from them, because that's ostensibly what they are there for. So, there would be some concern with that. It's not impossible. There are a lot of more cities, I think, around the country that do it that way. But there are, you know, certainly some drawbacks to it.
You mentioned the argument that Sylvester made years ago. Let me, I do remember that argument. Let me offer a simple, a more simple version that's shorter.
Okay.
I think that, if my memory serves right. Just for round figures, let's say that the power plant pays ten percent. It contributes ten percent of our tax revenue. Just use them, not picking on them, but just use them as our largest taxpayer. The power plant contributes ten percent of our tax revenue. They don't, but let's say that they did. It's a large number. I think it's somewhere around eight percent, but let's say it's ten percent. And let's say that the money that we take in from the, let's say we take it all, three-hundred-and-seventy-five thousand dollars. That would, what that would mean is that the power plant would have their tax bill reduced by thirty-seven thousand dollars. Because ten percent, if they're a ten percent contributor, they'd also be a ten percent benefactor of revenues that would come in without an additional budgetary expenditure. Additional revenues theoretically would reduce the tax rate, assuming that they would flow through the the undesignated fund balance back. They typically don't, but if they did, just to sort of use the math, I think that was the argument he was trying to say. It's large taxpayers like that get a substantial tax break. And then the question is, do we think they deserve a tax break that cable
Subscribers.
subscribers are contributing to? And I think that was the essence. I think it was more complex, but that was the essence of the argument, I think.
It's kind of a double-dipping thing. Can I answer any other questions?
Well, you had one more question at the beginning. Can you go back to that? Just refresh it, 'cause I think...
My first question?
Yeah.
Did I not get an answer?
I don't think you did.
Okay. I am motion. I have enough trouble going frontwards while I'm going backwards here. My first question was about the twenty-eight thousand, I believe, and whether or not that was being included in Dave's revenue. He said it was not.
That's right, okay.
I found it?
And Dave did. Okay.
So, I guess, just expanding a little bit on the scenario, if it went in, if everything went into the General Fund, I guess that twenty-eight thousand would not be able to go there. It would have to be somewhere protected, so it wouldn't be expended as part of the General Fund. Do you have any other questions? I think you know where I spend all my time. Well, these days I spend it on the floor, but usually only at the studio.
Go ahead, Tom.
Question, Dave?
This is my carrier.
If you play that scenario out, what are your thoughts about? I mean, we're, we've been, over the last several years, the council has taken chunks, if you will, of the franchise fee, of the funds and the... And I think we made a commitment this past budget season for a little over a hundred thousand.
Hundred and four, right.
So, I think that, in order to follow through with that commitment, I think we're somewhat obligated there to do that. But at least morally obligated, or not legally obligated. But the, but what about the other scenario about just sweeping the whole thing into the General Fund and just funding it as a department?
Well, Dottie makes a good point in that this, being a special revenue fund does allow us to fund equipment replacements.
But isn't there a maintenance trust fund solution to that?
Well, that's pretty much for buildings and grounds and physical structures, not for equipment. We don't fund a lot of equipment from a mixed-mail maintenance trust fund, so...
But could we, I mean, could we set up a cable maintenance trust?
Sure you could. Oh, sure. So, by having a special revenue fund, it allows us to segregate those funds much more easily and track them on a basis regarding the performance and how much funds has been allocated to personnel and equipment and everything else. From a practical matter, currently, if you grows budgeted, it would show a surplus revenue, at least for the last several years, which would reduce the tax rate, which is essentially what you're doing now for FY twelve.
Mary?
May I just, to the LUC? As one taxpayer who sat and watched some of the budget hearings and some of the opinions of people who do pay for cable and the options that were given about transferring the funds from the cable company to the, I mean, Cable Fund to the general revenue, there was more opposition to that than there was support for that. And I think that said that those people who are paying those cable fees felt that they were willing to pay the tax that they already pay in the town. They were willing to not have it reduced by whatever amount would be reduced by moving the money from the Cable Fund. And they did not want their fees to offset someone else's, as you, you know, as you gave that scenario for, for...
AES.
AES or Granite, whatever that, Granite Ridge. One, two. I would, I would hope that you wouldn't create this as part of the General Fund budget, because I think that then you're opening it up to more possible reductions where there isn't a value put on it as much as there is a value put on it right now. There's a specific reason why this was originally set up the way it was. And, you know, cable, this LACTV gives us an opportunity to create television that we can't create anywhere else. Whether, you know, you like it or not, or whether we're utilizing it or not, it's there, and we have that opportunity to do it. And throughout the years, there have been some really interesting and interesting things done, and I would hate to see that be taken away because the funds were taken away from their budget. So, I would hope that you would consider that beforehand. And then, just as a point of order, does this come forward to a public hearing, or is this, you guys make the decision tonight?
It's a resolution tonight that the council can adopt, because it's a policy decision.
And did you, I know John had offered an amendment, an amendment. Did you accept that amendment?
There was no second.
Okay, all right.
He offered it up as a discussion.
Okay, thank you.
Thanks.
My thought is, just to be clear, I'm not, what I suggested as a point of discussion is just that, it's a point of discussion. I'm not advocating for or against that. But I don't know if I've heard that proposed publicly, so I just wanna get it on the table to elicit comments that Mary just gave us. But I'd certainly like to hear more. I'd like to hear the rest of the council opine on that as well. And I'd like to hear more from the public, 'cause I, we've talked about taking pieces from the Cable, the Cable Fund, but I don't think we have had a comprehensive discussion on changing how we, how we structure. That would be a change to a structure of our government to some degree, and how it's funded and how we treat those revenues and those expenses. So, I think it's something that it almost begs for a public hearing, but it certainly is something that I would wanna get more input.
Okay. Anybody else, Tom?
Martin Surgis, seventeen Wimbledon Drive. All this time, I thought the cable franchise fee was supposed to be directed toward the cable studios. And now you're telling me tonight there's no legal tying into that. It could be used on anything?
That's correct.
So, then why are we calling it a cable fee? Because what you're doing, and I heard the arguments during the budget session also, that some people thought that that was not fair, what you're doing, because some people in town are paying the fee and some are not. I mean, I'm a direct satellite person, so I don't pay the fee. And you're taking the fee and paying part of the town taxes, and a lot of these folks felt that that was not very fair on doing that. To me, I would rather see you reduce the fee to cover the cost of the cable franchise and to be able to put some money aside for the equipment and leave it at that and not keep generating this large amount, three-hundred-and-fifty thousand dollars. Because again, it goes back to what's the purpose of the local cable studio? What kind of broadcast empire are you trying to make here? Because, you know, theoretically, if the fee is supposed to stay with the cable, it could keep generating, you know, it'll stay there, and then what do you do with it all? I mean, how many studios, how many cameras can you buy and that kind of stuff? So, I think we really need to look at this long-term, what the cable studio's purpose is, how much it takes to be funded. And it certainly shouldn't be put on the shoulder of a certain segment of the population. Now, I know to people out there looking at it, what I'm basically asking is that I'm gonna end up paying for part of this, you know, because I'm not paying for it now. But looking at the bigger picture, I would rather have it just focus on the, to pay for the cost of the cable, that to me is a franchise fee. And that's what I thought the original purpose was, and I'd like to keep it at that. Anything beyond that, then everybody needs to be in the boat and pay for the taxes of the town that takes care, that are cost to pay for it.
Just to save Dottie from having to struggle back to the microphone, the franchise fee is a negotiated part of the cable contract that we have with the cable provider. It's not something that we issue each year and determine what the fee is. That's part of the negotiations that were done several years ago, and will continue through the end of this contract, and then will be renegotiated with the next contract, whoever the next provider is, if it continues to be Comcast or not.
Right. It's a ten-year contract, but you're, on one hand, you're saying it's a franchise fee, but it can be used for anything in town. So, it doesn't seem to me like the two connect.
So, it's a cable, it's a cable usage, I'm Googling it as we're talking. It's a cable usage right-away fee, and it's a pass-through fee, right? So, the cable company doesn't pay it.
Right, I understand.
We pay.
Oh, I know.
So, what Dave is saying is, since we pay it, we can do whatever we want with it. I mean, now, no, no.
But that's, but that's a little misleading, isn't it?
I'm just reading what you Google.
Well, I know what you, I understand.
I'm only reading what Google says.
Yeah. No, I understand what it is. And the argument that I heard out here was that some people thought it was unfair that a certain segment of the population is paying an extra tax, if you will, for the rest of the town, that not everybody pays. The direct satellite people, we don't pay for that.
You're right. You don't.
So, to me, I would rather, if, I know it's a pass-through fee and there's no legal, I would rather direct that money to the cable studio to keep it self-funded, to pay for what it needs to get, so that it doesn't end up having to go to the town, so to speak. But, you know, that would, me, be the best deal, I think, between the two systems. But, you know, that's just my thoughts. Thank you.
Monty? Isn't it similar to, if you have a dog and you have to pay a license fee for the dog? It goes to the General Fund, you know, and that's a tax on that pet owner. You chose to be a cable owner, what...
Yeah. Well, I know, I hear what you're saying.
And just one other question, I guess, just to, just to kind of, you know, the logical conclusion of, what happens if, as Dottie indicated, cable fees, cable franchise fees start to go down? They go down to the extent that they can't fund cable service anymore. Would you expect the taxpayers then to subsidize that?
No. No, I see what you're saying. I don't think they'll ever...
No, I've just asked, 'cause I, you know...
But under your, under the discussion right now, should the cable fees be brought into the town and the town take over the running of the, you know, I mean, the payment of the, it'd be in the General Fund? In fact, should those cable funds go away, the taxpayers would be paying, because that would be part of our General Fund bill.
All right, but then they get the benefit of all the cable.
They get the benefit of all the cable right now.
Well, I don't think they do, because if there's a surplus, and I don't know if there has been, but I think because it's a special revenue fund, if I'm right, don't they get, does it go to the undesignated fund balance? They get to keep it in their fund and use it in the following year?
It stays in the fund. Well, whatever, whatever's left over has to be re-appropriated if they wanna increase their budget. But it does, it is separate from the General Fund. It goes in the Special Revenue Fund. That's correct.
Well, you know, by the same token, Tom, I guess I would just say, then we should spend all of our undesignated fund, you know, the balance. We should, we should just go zero everything out in order to help our...
I'm not, I'm not favor one way or the other about this. I'm just saying, if you, if you, if you wanna sit there and say, "I pay a cable franchise fee, and therefore, I thought it was going to be used for the cable," I guess, you know, somebody's been, you know, that's not the case. So, you know, the fact is, it just comes to the town.
It is the case for the majority of the, of the funds are being used for the Cable Department. It's only the appropriation by the Town Council, the forty thousand, that is not being used.
But that apparently is discretionary between the council year by year, what they wanna use.
And every year, they listen to public opinion and make their decision based on it or by ignoring it. But it is, it is certainly something that is open for discussion every single time.
And that's absolutely what this is. I mean, I'm bringing it up as a one-year thing. So, all this is governed under Section six-twenty-two of the Federal... so all this is governed under section six twenty-two of the Federal Cable Act. Federal Cable Act never talks about cable, all it talks about is that these are gross revenues. It talks about things, it actually, number four in the section says franchise fee passed through. The only, the only part of this amendment that I'm talking about is, is that for this year, go to two and a half percent, give ourselves the flexibility so that if we get bad news from, from Concord, we have some flexibility. If we don't get as bad news from Concord, we also have the authority to give it back. That's the discussion.
Okay, well, hold on one second, this, this is a point to, that we're debating, I'll come back to you.
Okay.
Go ahead.
Dave, is there a language to capture what John's trying to do, such that the money would stay in the cable fund, but it would be available to the town should the town need it, given the, the state's budget, I mean, is there, rather than pulling it out and then putting it back, is there, is there a language that would?
Well, we should know by July first regarding the financial consequences of the state budget, so the council can adopt this this evening. If you need to amend this to, to redirect more of the franchise fees coming in, you, you have opportunity to do that in June, before the start of the fiscal year.
Do we have to adopt it this evening? Can we hold it?
You can hold it, sure, as long as you adopt something by, right now, our budget calls for one point five percent, a hundred and five thousand dollars, so you need to take that action before July first.
Or that fund, or that position doesn't get funded until we do something with it?
No, essentially what happens is, is that all three positions have been funded. What happens is, you've got, you have an estimated revenue on the general operating budget for a hundred and four thousand dollars, so if you don't redirect the cable funds, or when they come in, send one point five of the general fund and then three and a half at least to the cable fund, then you're going to be shy with your revenues on the operating fund.
Having that input, may I suggest to the council that, that we table this resolution to our, our second meeting in the month of June?
Okay.
And then we'll have more information about what the state's going to do with their budget.
I can second that if that's agreeable.
That's fine. Okay.
I'm just trying to get us in a position of where, we've always been in a position of not having enough information and making decisions. Let's, let's know what we're doing.
Yeah.
You know, and that will also give us time to talk about the whole change of use fees, and what we want to do with it.
I'm glad you brought that up. I think that's a good thing to bring on the table.
I think also, if I, if I may, Mr. Chairman, I would invite the public to think about and discuss and come here and, and give testimony to us about their feelings about these types of changes, the change that, that I suggested we think about, and do we want to move the whole thing into the operating fund or not, and to help give us additional counsel and advice from the public as how they feel about it, and, you know, if, if they really, I mean, we've heard some testimony, tiny, very limited testimony, that the general public is against that. I'm not sure we can trust that, that sense with so few people commenting. So I'd, I'd like to hear from more folks about that, and maybe this gives us a little more runway in the calendar to get that type of input as well.
Well, I, I mean, I can tell you as a cable subscriber for umpteen years, I'm actually okay with it, but that's just my two cents, because pay me now, pay me later, one way or the other, I'm going to be paying for it, so if it, they're pulling it from there, it goes, you know, but anyway. Okay, let's come right over to you, Pat.
Miss Quali Vitale seventy-five, Mammoth Road, a couple of comments, and then I have a question. Tom, you mentioned the business about dog licenses, that's a tax. The franchise fees is not a tax. Eighty percent of the residents in Londonderry have cable, twenty percent, fifteen to twenty percent do not. So the eighty percent is paying for double dipping, they're paying their taxes, and then the money is going from the franchise fees into the taxes. You're double dipping. And the question I'd like to ask, why aren't you, you have three special reserve funds in town, why don't you take money out of the sewer fund? Why don't you take money out of the police overtime fund? Why are you only picking the cable fund?
It just happened to come up tonight.
Yeah, you go ahead.
Tommy?
Dave, you can discuss the law associated with it.
Well, the, the sewer fund actually does pay the general fund about three hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars a year.
Okay, what about the policeman overtime fund?
That is simply an in and out. Whoever pays for those services, we collect enough money to pay for the expenses of the officer and the cruiser. That's more of a, that's more of an enterprise fund.
But you keep on saying there's no legal restrictions of you doing what you're doing. RSA thirty-one, let me call in, or call in ninety-five dash C, says, once the special reserve fund is established, the money that's in that fund can only be used for the reason that fund was done, unless you have a change by a legislative vote. Now, the last three years, there hasn't been a legislative vote.
There's two parts to that question. Number one is that certainly we make an argument that when the town meeting adopts the annual budget, they've made a policy decision in the last two years to move forty thousand dollars over to the general fund. This year, with this resolution, the funds coming in, the one point five percent doesn't make it to the special revenue fund, that gets redirected to the general fund, and a three point five percent goes into the special revenue fund.
So you're saying, because you wrote on the whole budget, you're already, you're already changing your resolution of two thousand dash zero three, stating that five percent is going through?
That's correct.
So that, you consider that to be a legislative vote?
It's part of the operating budget adopted by the voters of the community.
I think it's wrong.
Thank you, Pat. Okay. Well.
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to make a motion that we table resolution two thousand eleven dash zero five to our second meeting in June.
Second.
Okay. We have a motion and a second to table this until our June meeting. Comment, discussion?
Absolutely.
Okay, I think it's also pretty obvious we should have some sort of public hearing on it, or at least a secondary.
Yep, that's, that's what, part of Tom's original discussion, he wanted to.
So when we make this, when we make a motion to move this, do we also put, put on the fact that we're going to put it as a public meeting?
It's up to the council.
Public hearing, or?
So if you like.
Yeah.
Well, if you, if you want to make it a public hearing as part of the resolution, then what we would do is move the resolution to the first meeting in June and announce a public hearing for the second meeting in June.
Okay.
Is that an amendment?
I'm asking, are you amending a motion?
I'll amend my motion to, to make the resolution to be tabled to the first meeting in June.
I'll amend my second.
Okay. All right, so is that good?
Perfect, thank you.
Okay, Tom, anything? All right. Okay, so we have a motion, a second amended. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Seeing none? Chair votes affirmative? Five zero. All right. I think that is it for.
Approval of minutes.
Yep, we have the approval of minutes. Okay, so we need to approve the minutes from our meeting of three seven two thousand eleven?
So moved.
Second?
Second. Dave, do we vote on it since we weren't present?
Well, we read it.
Okay.
It's just, I've seen folks do it either way, Tom.
If you want.
It's your vote.
Okay.
I think, I, we, I think that we tend to abstain from votes too liberally. I think extent, abstention should be reserved for conflicts of interest, but that's my personal opinion, unless you guys have some conflict.
I have a problem either way.
I feel com, I feel comfortable voting on it, because I read it and I was here most of the time, so.
All right.
Okay, so do we see any changes that need to be done, or everybody okay with it? All right. Okay, so, all those in favor, say aye.
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 Opposed? Motion, I support the motion, so motion carries five zero. Okay, other business, we'll do liaison reports. Mr. Farrell? Obviously, these two gentlemen don't yet, and I had nothing.
Are you going to handle liaison assignments under here?
Um, did you want to do that tonight, or did we want to?
Your call.
Well, we have, yeah, we have meetings coming up, so.
Yeah, well, I guess we can schedule for the next meeting. Does that sound good?
It's up, it's up to you folks.
No, what I'm saying is, we have meetings coming up, right?
Oh, that's right, we should get that. Yeah. Okay. All right. All right, well, how do we do, do you guys want to do this? I'll read off the, the board and committee, have who we have signed up for it, and then just basically you can yea or nay if you're okay with it, or how do we want to handle it?
It's your meeting, it's however you want to handle it.
It's our meeting, it's not my meeting, you know that.
Well, there's a few, I think there's a few of them there that probably need some discussion, I mean.
Okay, so as we go one by one, maybe? That's fine, we'll do it one by one, and we'll go through it, and we'll go by that, and.
Don't mean to be difficult, Chairman.
It's your meeting too, you can be as difficult as you want. All right, the first one we have is a capital improvement plan, and we have John listed as the liaison. Are you okay with that, John?
Yeah, I've been doing it for years, it's fine with me.
Okay. All right. Recreation Committee, Mr. Green, are you okay with that?
Just going back to that really quick, I'm new, so I don't know. Alternate, it says, you can have an alternate to the CIP if you aren't able to show up.
I don't think we have an alternate.
No, we never did.
For council liaisons.
Never did it?
I think we only have an alternate, you can't have an alternate for planning board because you got to be sworn in. There's only one or two committees we have an alternate for, you remember?
Well, planning board is one, but you, but you've got to designate the alternate.
For that evening, and they have to be sworn in.
That, that's correct, that's why.
Right, I'm sorry, thank you.
And the reason why, I mean, all the boards are real important, but some of the things that, you know, some of the boards that are really driving, some decisions that are coming up, I just want to make sure, in case.
Yeah, for example.
You're out of town, or I'm out of town, or?
You're a voting member, so if I say, you know, if, if I was still the liaison, which I'm not going to be, I'd say to Tom, hey, Tom, can you, can you cover for me? Tom says, no, Sean, can you cover for me? You know, Sean goes, because we're going to vote on X, Y, Z. He has to go and get sworn in for that night only. You're not sworn in for the whole term.
But we are saying.
Because you're not a voting member.
Okay, so you're saying you don't need to identify the person ahead of time, it can't, it would be, if you couldn't make it, you would call one of the other counselors?
Generally, what happens is, is at least in my case, I would contact the chairman, ask the chairman if he felt that it was necessary for me to have someone else sworn in, chairman would indicate to me yes or no, you know, based on what the agenda is, and then you go from there.
The reason the planning board's different is because you're a full member of the board, you're not just a liaison. A liaison just kind of observes and provides input if requested, participates, you know, nominally. As a planning board member, you're actually a full ex officio member, a voting member of the planning board.
Yeah, I mean, as I mentioned to you before, Joe, I mean, almost always the freshman counselor went on to the planning board. It used to be every Wednesday night, fifty-two, you know, fifty, I think we skipped holidays. But what's good about it is, is after eleven years on it, you know everything inside out, and you really, you're really part of what the town's going to look like, you know, down the road. But then it gives you also a lot of exposure from the standpoint of that you can, you know, much clearly understand when things come back and say, well, why did we move that road like we did before? That's, you know, just gives you a lot of visibility to the, to the plumbing of the town, I guess is the best way to put it. I mean, Tom got it, he was on it like three or four years. This Tom served a few years, so you know, but it's, it's a good board.
There's two freshmen and we drew straws.
Well, whatever you guys decide. I mean, you know, I just know I'm not doing it.
That was clear.
Well, eleven years is long enough.
I hear you, I hear you. Long overdue retirement. Okay, so does that answer your question good? You're all set? Okay. All right, Recreation Commission.
Joe.
Yes, all right, you good with it?
Perfect.
Okay. Um, let's see, Arts Council, Mr. Frida.
All right.
Good. Leech Library Trustees, Joe.
Sure.
Okay. Tom, International Exchange? Uh, John, Elder's Affair Committee?
Yeah, I'm good with that. I like working with that.
Okay. Um, Tom, Budget Committee?
Yep.
You good with that? All right, uh, John, Old Home Day?
I'd give it a whirl.
Okay.
Find out, find out, find out what Reed's going to tell me to do.
All right, and I, I kept the Heritage Commission. Planning Board?
I'm the lucky winner.
You are the lucky winner?
Short straw or big straw? Well, it just means you get it next year. I mean, that's really what it means, because
you rotate out. That's the only way you learn this thing.
Yeah, I would, I know that Tom's done it before, and Joe hasn't, I just, I guess I would suggest it's an opportunity as a new counselor to learn, you know, learn the land use rules and regulations. It's a, it's a way to get plugged in real fast, and the fact that, I mean, I've done it, John's done it, Tom's done it, you really shouldn't do it as chairman, and it, it just seemed to me the logical choice would be Joe, and with Tom being an attorney, his expertise could be used on the zoning board probably well. So that's, I'm not on either one of those, so it's not my call, but that's just my input of how, you know, to get up to speed on a lot of these decisions that we're making, it's, it's real good experience. Want to reconsider, do you?
Nope.
Okay, well, I mean, just out of curiosity, why not?
Because I was on the zoning board for past couple of years, and I would like to stay on the zoning board, and I think with the, the amount of things that we already chosen, I think my schedule's pretty full, and, that's it.
Okay.
That's my reasoning.
As far as an alternate for the planning board, I'm willing to, if we need it, I'm just throwing it out there.
Yeah, I mean, feel free, I mean, but it's, I just explained to you how it works.
Yeah, and I, and honestly, I wouldn't expect it would happen.
It's not going to be me.
I, I wouldn't expect it would happen, because obviously, to be right up to speed in one meeting, it's not going to happen, so I, I wouldn't expect anything.
Sean, let me, could I ask a question on that?
Yeah.
So, again, I'm not trying to make this different or difficult, but if there was a time that Tom was in, I wouldn't mind doing that at all, I really wouldn't. Just trying to make all the balls juggle properly, that's all I'm saying.
Well, I think to, to what John was saying earlier, the thing is, when it comes down to it, Joe, there, he's going to make a call to the chair, say, look, I'm on a business, or whatever the circumstances may be.
Or Tom's going to send an email to Art and say, hey, I'm not available.
Right, and then, it, it really, it, I can tell you, I was the backup, I never had one call while John was out of town, because it doesn't make sense for me to just come into a meeting and be a voting member of something I, you know, other than following it in the news, and I, I really can't make a good decision, because he's sat in every meeting and gone through it, he's going to understand what he's voting on, whereas I'm going to be like, basically trying to cram for a test and really not have a good firm basis of what I'm voting on. And I think that's in essence what they're trying to say.
And again, the only point that I was trying to make was, I think it's very volatile, the board right now is very volatile, time of the year going into this whole thing in Woodmont, and I just want to make sure that somebody, I mean, obviously I trust the people that are on there very much, but at the same time, I'd like the leadership of a town council to be there as much as possible, and I'm not the one that's going to be sitting there, so I can't, you know.
Just for clarification purposes, the board's not volatile at all, right? The board is longstanding, there's people there with many years, there's a lot of activity coming at the board, that's true. There's no volatility at all. I mean, that, that board, that, 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 that board has got its act together, from the standpoint of understanding.
And I didn't, and I mean it in that way at all.
I just wanted to clarify that, Tom.
Right, so my clarification was that, obviously not meant that way, but a lot of things coming very quickly, a lot of questionable things coming, and I just want to make sure that we all are aware of that.
Okay, so what questionable things are coming? I've been serving for eleven years.
Well, just a lot of media, a lot of information in the newspapers, and, you know, obviously diving right in there, I want to get more involved with it.
But you see, we can't sit up here and make statements like saying something questionable is happening on a board, exactly what's happening.
No, questionable means there's a lot of questions from the town, people in town asking about what's exactly happening, how exactly is it, is it going to go forward with the P O D master plan? So people that haven't been there and haven't been as involved, so obviously.
So what you're saying is, is that people have a lot of questions and clarifications about what's happening going forward?
Absolutely.
Okay, okay. Dave had a question?
Yeah, they've amended the state law this year, I don't know if this is a change, but as far as the alternate for the planning board, that's, it has to be appointed by the respective council, board, or commission, so.
Oh, that's new.
So when you vote on this slate of, of representatives, you have to name your alternate. It's got to be a, it's got to be a council vote. It's just gotta be a, it's gotta be a council vote, it can't be just be a designation.
Well, that's what we did last year, but, you know.
Sean, would you mind if I went on there as an alternate?
Sure. I'm fine with it, what about the rest of the council?
I don't want me.
Yeah, I'm good.
Yeah? You're good? Okay, so you're the alternate.
Thank you.
Thanks, Joe. Okay. All right, uh, cons comm, Tom?
Yeah.
Good with it?
Sure.
Okay. Um, Manchester Airport Authority, John?
Um, yeah, I can probably, when do those meet again?
That's, uh, third, Thursday of the month.
Thursday for lunch?
Yeah.
Yeah, I can probably do that once a month.
There's a three o'clock meeting for them.
Yeah, I can probably pull off a Thursday, I think.
All right, cool, thank you. Uh, traffic safety, I'll keep that. If there's no objections. The Z B A, Joe, you're staying on it, is what you'd like to do?
Mm-hmm.
Okay.
That's okay.
That's fine with me.
Rest of the council?
It's fine with me.
Remember, you're a liaison, you won't be a, a member anymore, the Z B A.
Right. Okay. Uh, solid waste advisory, Mr. Frida?
Yes.
That's fine. All right.
So he gets all the trash questions now?
Yeah.
Thank God.
And the litter questions?
All right, I'm gonna-
In fact, in fact, isn't, isn't, shouldn't we be accepting, uh, Joe's resignation tonight?
Yeah, we, I guess we'll be getting to that.
Yeah.
It's the last.
It's an es- yeah, it's the next thing. Okay, um, I, unless there's any objections, uh, the Southern New Hampshire hazmat, Paul was, uh, and he gave me the book. It's a big red book, so I, I guess I was fine with doing that unless somebody else wanted to do it. It meets quarterly at a fire station, or they kinda rotate.
Just ask Jim Roger on your all set.
So, I'll keep that. Uh, school board, John, or?
Yeah, school board's fine with me.
Okay.
I, I've built a relationship with them, so.
Okay, that's fine. Uh, let's see, housing task force, Marimac Valley, and then Tom, Merrimack Valley Water District, is that okay? Okay. All right, uh, so that's it. Alder Fias, that's John.
John.
Yep, John's got that. Actually, if you wanna pass that sound, I can just double check it. Okay.
The only change is, uh, Joe wants the alternate for planning board to talk that.
Yeah, I crossed my name out from last year. Okay, uh-
A motion to accept their liaison list as provided to the secretary.
Okay, second? All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Chair votes affirmative, five zero? All right, uh, town manager report?
Yeah, just a couple of brief things, is that in your packet, you have the revised language for the charter as developed by our town attorney, uh, as a result of the citizens' vote to adopt the official ballot process, so we'll be incorporating that into the town charter. We've also attached a draft FY-13 budget calendar, just to give you a sense of how it flows. Essentially, the beginning date and the end date are pretty much the same, it's just that, if you recall, in the last couple of years, we've had, you know, about a three to four week lull over the holidays, and we won't have the luxury of that anymore if we're gonna continue to have our town meeting in conjunction with the school, which is the second Tuesday of March, so just, I mean, I don't need adoption of that tonight, just to give you an idea of how it's gonna flow. Council last year, discussion about pursuing to recommend a provision of the charter to, uh, meet with all the board and commission chairs, and so it's one of the, we want to start that process in April.
When, um, when are the junkyard permits?
Junkyard permits are effective July first, those will be in, in May.
So April's a good time.
Right.
Thank you.
So we can schedule a couple of three, uh, chairpersons per meeting, just to comply with the provisions of the charter and just-
Yeah, I think that would be great, I think that's, that was one of the, one of the things I thought we, when we talked about, was a good idea, so. They should definitely, uh, come in and talk.
At some point, the council should begin the process of establishing goals and objectives for FY-12, so have to start that in the next couple of months. The, uh, the fire department will be sponsoring an open house at the new Northwest Fire Station on April sixteenth, that's just a, so you can mark your calendars, and we'll be sending out invitations as well.
How were the feedback so far after the move-in?
Uh, so far, so good.
April sixteenth, you said?
Yeah, April sixteenth, yeah, there's still, we're still holding money on the project, because there's, uh, like, the final quarter asphalt's not down yet, and some, some repairs need to happen on the exterior of the building, so.
Punchless.
Yeah, yeah, so we're looking again at April sixteenth, and, uh, you three councils may recall that you adopted a couple of resolutions regarding street numbering at Whispering Pines, that's been delayed a couple of times because of the zip code issue with the post office, so staff has recommended we proceed with renumbering the houses, the zip code won't change at this point, and Karen, what's the effective date you're recommending?
Four twenty.
Okay, so, so the new street numbers will be in effect on April twentieth of, uh, two thousand and-
Do we need to have a public hearing, or?
Uh, nope. It's just changing the implementation date, so we're, we're good.
Okay.
Yeah, my understanding is, is that the post office sent out their survey, and the survey said no, or something along those lines. Yeah, I, I heard about it at a town meeting from somebody.
Come on up, Karen.
Karen Marshant de Sessa, um, we asked that the, um, post office, which was a district office, sent out a survey because we wanted to get the, um, actual mailing address all in London Dairy for nine-one-one purposes. This is right now, they have a London Dairy street address, but a dairy, um, town, the bottom line says Dairy, New Hampshire, oh-three-oh-three-eight. So the, um, post office did send out a survey asking them, would they like to use Dairy, or would they like to use London Dairy? And of the, um, two hundred and fifty-eight approximate units up there, probably about two hundred and eighty, including what's in Dairy, only seventy-one sent back the survey, and forty-something of those wanted it to be Dairy and not London Dairy. So it's gonna remain a dairy address as far as the town, state zip is concerned. And there, and there's nothing that we can do about it at this time. We have, um, files sort of on appeal, um, through, um, Senator Shaheen's office, we've been working with them, we're trying to get that changed, but as of right now, we realize we've gotta get this out in the mail, we've gotta get these people's address with an address that just doesn't say Lane on it, because everyone up there has Lane one, Lane two, Lane three, Lane four, and, um, we need to get them with an actual street address like you all have, so.
So do they, right now, currently, they have Dairy as an address, okay. Do they actually pay taxes to Dairy, or to London Dairy?
All their taxes is paid, there's, um, there's thirty-seven units in Dairy and two hundred and twenty-one that are in London Dairy, and they all have a Dairy, uh, zip code in the mailing address. And we can't control that, that's a federal government control.
That's good for them, because our tax rate's a lot less than Dairy's.
There you go.
So, so essentially, what's happening is, is that, um, the postal communities and each of the post offices are, are, um, created by postal stops, which regulates their union contracts. So when they have to change, they actually have to give up routes, and they have to work within their union contracts to do that, as, you know, as part of the collective bargaining. What the confusion has been is, and will probably continue to be, is that when nine-one-one dispatches, we buy, we may both be going, which has been happening in the past, so London Dairy and Dairy will respond, because if, if it's not crystal clear, they send both agencies. So that, that's why it's all been going on, and it's been, what, three years now?
Well, we've been, I mean, we met with them last spring, I think it was.
I think it was two springs ago.
Oh, it could've been two springs ago.
I wasn't even on the council.
Oh, yeah, you-
It actually was two years ago.
It was two years ago, yep, because you were there as a planning board member.
That's when we came up with the nine-one-one renaming the task force.
Task force, yeah.
We had a similar situation.
What confuses it even more up there is they, um, we have the address in London Dairy that we gave them, say, Lane three A unit, or Lot twelve. So they have that for an address, that's their physical address, but in their mailing line, they use one-ninety-two bypass twenty-eight. Well, that's not even a town, a, a street in London Dairy, we don't even recognize it. Then they use a unit number for their postal box where the, all the post off boxes are on, on the premises at Whispering Pines. So when they call nine-one-one, some of them just say, "I live at one-ninety-two bypass twenty-eight." And then they give their box number. So they, they, they don't even realize that they're living in London Dairy and that they have a lane address. So, you know, it's, it's really confusing sometimes for the fire department, uh, where they're going.
Okay.
So hopefully, this, we've got, um, about eight new streets up there, and they're all in the names of trees. Douglas and Conifer and, and, uh, so forth, so, um, at least when the fire departments hear those names, they, they know where they're going.
And this is basi- and basically, what you guys are looking for is to put street, or put numbers?
Street address for the people when they call nine-one-one, yep.
Right, but the post office on zip code, so we, we're, we're just kinda stuck between a rock and a hard place.
All right, hold on, Tom. Dave, you on it?
Uh, just to make a comment, we had a similar situation on one-oh-two east of ninety-three, which took three years to resolve.
They're, they're using London Dairy oh-three-oh-three-eight over there.
Yeah.
But they're not using Dairy oh-three-oh-three, they're using London Dairy oh-three-oh-three. So.
So at least we send the right agency.
Tom, go ahead. So. Okay, go ahead. When somebody in this area calls nine-one-one, um, what comes, what shows up at the state, at the dispatch center?
I, I'm not positive on, on that.
So, I mean, is the confusion that you don't know this, this town?
The confusion is the people don't know where they live, and they call it in as Dairy, and it might show up as London Dairy, but the operators have been trained that the person calling is correct. No matter what it says on their screen, if they say they're in Dairy, they'll dispatch Dairy.
It, it should show up as being five Douglas Place, London Dairy. It should, but if they insist upon Dairy, they live in Dairy, they'll send, they'll probably send both units out.
You send both.
So what the nine-one-one coordinators have told us is, is that if, if they don't know, they dispatch both.
Right. So what officer would be the final factor? I mean, who, who do we have to convince, who do we have to go talk to, who do we?
The postmaster general.
So have we made any queries, or?
Yeah, we, we have to, yeah, we have to contact the postmaster general in, in Washington, DC, and we've tried, I mean-
Dave, we in process of that right now, or?
Yeah, we have, we have contacted them after this, um, after the survey came back, and it, it didn't favor us, we have contacted them. Yep.
Wouldn't it be possible to have an agreement between the Dairy and the London Dairy Fire Department, that say, for the first six months, London Dairy will respond in these questionable areas, and then the second half, Dairy responds? Just so that we're not duplicating the effort?
I mean, we can initiate those discussions, but I've learned a long time ago, it's best left to the emergency responders to figure out who's gonna respond. They's, they've got their own systems, and I'll get more information on, on how they do respond, and the decisions they do make. It's not uncommon for communities that have, uh, densely populated areas on borders to send both. You know, I've worked in communities whereby we have a lot of trucks, so if there's a fire alarm at the school, for example, the neighborhood community's in the ladder truck on automatic response and turn around, so this may be a similar situation, but I'll find out what the protocols are currently from the fire chief.
But here's where it gets complicated, okay? We dispatch, we're out on ninety-three. Another call comes in, Dairy comes here for mutual aid. Third call comes in, Auburn is coming down. Where do they go? Nobody knows. That's the problem the nine-one-one centers have, because they're not familiar with the town. So, it, so to have a defined address like Karen's talking about, I mean, literally, three years ago, we started working on this. You know, and, you know, it's a lot better. It was really bad before. This is an improvement.
Yeah.
And I, and to your comment, I don't know if Dairy's gonna say, "The property is located in London Dairy, you should be the one responding." You know, with the, you were saying six months for you, and six months. These properties are all in London Dairy, there are thirty-seven units in Dairy, and they should be calling Dairy, and I don't know if we've ever responded to any of those thirty-seven units.
Well, they also, if I may, they, when they dial nine-one-one, they, they don't dial London Dairy Dairy, they dial Concord.
Right.
Right.
So it's up to Concord to decide who-
That's correct.
Who responds.
That's correct.
All right, so going back to, because this is in the town manager report, so.
It's just an informational item, but I will find out the protocol currently for Whispering Pines, I don't know what that is, but I'll find out.
Yeah, Jim grabbed me at a town meeting and told me, I was just standing there shaking my head.
All right. What else you got, Dave?
Oh, sorry, I had two other things.
Yep.
Dave, the, uh, again, a lot of positive feedback about the, uh, presentation the police department made about burglaries and prevention and so forth. Is there a way that, uh, I should've, should've done it when Gotti was here, could we ask, could you ask the cable studio to capture that police, that video of that presentation from, from our, our minute, our-
Their reading?
Meeting? And maybe, uh, post that on the town website as a, as an on-demand video that people could watch?
Sure.
And the appropriate place on the website?
Sure.
The second item I wanted to suggest, this little pamphlet I think all of us got for, uh, something that comes out every year, I think there's about seven or eight workshops that have been designated this spring for new elected officials. I was first elected to the council in two thousand and one, Andy Greco recommended I go attend one of these, and I took him up on it, and it was a, a very good, worthwhile take, it's only six hours, and then every day of the week, including Saturdays, to pick from. So I would, uh, recommend to our two new counselors that they consider, consider that, I think it's, uh, it's a worthwhile take as they get started.
All right, Dave, so you were, you're all set?
Yes.
Yep.
Okay. All right, so, boards, committees, appointments, reappointments, I have one thing listed tonight, and that's the resignation of Joe Green from the Z B A.
Motion to accept the resignation.
Can I second that?
No. You can second it. Second is by John Farrell. Okay, uh, we have a motion and a second, uh, all those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed, abstaining?
Abstained.
Okay. Motion carries four-zero-one. You are now resigned from the zoning board, but congratulations, you're back on. Okay, uh, unless we have any further information? Mr. Clark?
I made my public comments at the appropriate time, but I noticed three things. Number one, I didn't get the date of the public hearing for the discontinuance.
For the cable, the cable access fees?
Discontinuance of the road.
Oh, 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 I'm sorry.
Public hearing, you said?
Four-four, I think it was, April fourth, April fourth, four-four, eleven.
Okay. And number two, uh, you accidentally said, uh, the minutes of the council public meeting of three-seven.
Mm-hmm.
Only three of you can vote, the other two have to abstain, so it was three, two, and zero.
Well, there's nothing, there really isn't anything that they can, they can still vote on it.
How can they vote on something they weren't there?
Well, we were, and we were the cap-
Not as a seventh, the eighth. Oh, you happened to be as, as members, you can't vote.
Well, I, I cleared that with, I cleared that with Dave before we did that, so, he gave us the okay, so.
Okay. And you had public hearing there on this thing that I got in the, on the computer?
Mm-hmm.
Had public hearing. Was there a public hearing ever to be held there?
What are we talking about? No, there's no hearings. There's no hearings. No, there wasn't any hearings tonight, we had nothing scheduled.
Why did we have it there?
It's just, this is a template, and the template just, you know, he has it on here, there's nothing listed under it, meaning we have nothing tonight. It's, it's been done this way for a long, long time. As long as I can remember.
Okay, all right.
So as a point of clarification, there was just nothing listed under the public hearings tonight, Reed?
Okay, thank you.